Parade in the hundred and seventy fifth anniversary.
You heard from him, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's gonna take that long to plan this out. It's huge. I know, I remember when she got the fire station. And it takes a whole year to get everybody lined up.
Yep. You have a pretty chairman down there.
Yeah. Well, there you go. And then now that I know that, maybe I'll give you a folder. I'll take one thing off my plate. But yeah. Um, I've got some good participation from some local residents at the Bard who looked up to everything we did last time. It's been so long. Darren Seemore was chief last time we had a parade and did the hundred and fiftieth year anniversary for that town.
We lined up on twenty two B, came down twenty two B into the village and Karen and I were debating if we went up Emory Street or if we went down and turned right up Mason.
Yeah.
My concern is that turn up Mason may be hard for some of the residents.
It is for some of the floats and some of the stuff. Now, the other thing they talked about too, not to change subjects, but I talked to John and I'm trying to work with him to do a veterans memorial down at River Street and do a Memorial Day break. So.
John Rock?
Maybe a John Rock. Cause he thinks that, I don't wanna speak for him, something I shouldn't, but maybe I'll get some funding. On the activity that you do. So he knows all that whole crew and um, can't be sure that.
He needs anything to get things rolling or not get home in.
It was too late this year. By the time we got the idea and formulated it and that's what it is right now.
But again, you wanna get things going early because.
And he would like to do it as an evening parade instead of doing that noon where the floats could be lit and. That's something that we could discuss in the morning. There's too many Fourth of July parades that jump in on that day.
And you're not gonna get that day. There's no reason.
I think the only one that I know of is Ross's point. It doesn't matter. And they're not close enough to us. That would affect anybody in our surrounding area.
I mean, it might pull some of your departments. You might not be able to get.
Yeah, maybe from up there.
Yeah.
Uh, but uh, it's well received.
But we have enough departments around here to cover it up. I think you'd be alright.
Yeah, I think so too. But uh, we have a lot of, you know, delusions of grandeur. We'll see how we can get them to fruition.
If you're going on that, let me know. I can probably go after quite a bit of stuff for the parade for you. Different businesses and stuff that I know that'll support it.
Yeah. That's good. And that's some resource too along that same lines. Um, Association of Towns got a training coming up. This is forward to the planning board and ZVA board. Uh, this is a big training for them. So um, with that, our association of town.
Is it computer?
Yeah, it's on the computer.
What do you mean it's a computer training? On a computer? You don't have to travel?
I don't, I don't know yet. I, they're, they're, they might do it virtually and in, and in person. It looks like they're doing it in person cause they got the Marriott here is where it used to always be held at. Membership rates for twenty twenty-two, but they're about two months earlier, almost three months earlier than what they usually put this out. And I think that's what they're trying to do is find out what the interests are to see whether.
Where's it at? Where are they?
New York City. Yeah, Marriott, New York City where I always used to be. The rates go up dramatically after October thirty first. So um, we're better off to know who's interested, where they want, the room rates are locked in right now until then, until October thirty first. So if you plan on going uh, to any of it and you uh, are interested, let me know so that we can. I think we usually do this by resolution anyways, but uh, we put money in the budget for training. But what I'm saying is I gotta know pretty soon, pretty soon. So February nineteenth through twenty-second is when the dates are. But they're starting really early for the lock-in of rooms and the special rates.
Going back to the one for the zoning board and planning board, is that, that's through the Association of Towns too, right?
That, same exact one. Yeah, Association of Towns. You interested in that?
That's not in New York City though, right?
No. I don't believe so. I think we got enough close to the right board that it's on the board, the planning board.
We were discussing that at the last committee about needing that for everybody.
It says please share with the planning board, zoning board, and board of appeals. It says in person though. It's Association of Towns and New York Planning Federations. Fall planning and zoning schools will return as in-person events on the dates and the locations on their clothes. Down to Hyde Park, City of, uh, I don't know, I guess they would say that. I don't ask me how to pronounce that. Village of Lake Placid. So that one's close enough for them to go. Those are the three places that they can attend. It's the ninety dollars if they're a registered member, ninety-five if they're not. No, I'm lying to you. Non-members, a hundred and ten.
One day?
Um.
Yeah, one day, October sixth. I, I had it. I was gonna bring it up actually. Um, and what I'm wondering just.
Yeah, well, the closest one, that Lake Placid.
It's one day, Lake Placid.
September twenty eighth and September thirteenth is the other two days.
Being, being on code enforcement liaison, I'd like to go myself. I'd like to attend it. Does anyone have a, would that be okay? If you can go, it's, it's one day, uh, Lake Placid trip.
Yeah, I'll find it.
If you guys wanna look at information on it, it's, it's October sixth.
I'm gonna be out of town that weekend.
Really?
Uh, Thursday, Thursday, October sixth. I'd like to go, so should I put a resolution in next meeting? Because the registration is open right now for.
Yeah, no, I would just, give me something that you, you wanna do. I'll get all the Mary tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll work on it. Uh, and me I'll go, go to that with you.
Oh, okay.
We'll see what happens.
Okay.
I'll have to look at my schedule.
Okay.
I'm on that.
Like you said, it's one day, so. Do you wanna copy this?
I, I think that will give me everything I need.
Okay.
Other than you said, uh, no, the date's right there. I went to, I read it too. When, does it say on yours when the absolute last day you can register?
Uh, no, it doesn't, but I know it's open right now for registration.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, town ride, uh, garbage, uh, garage sale is uh, this weekend coming up, the twentieth and the twenty-first. So.
Anything happen with the town garage?
Town garage, um, I have several emails. I talked to everybody last meeting, pretty much. The um, the best that we came up with between myself and Barton and La Judas, um, a little push from Renee, but. They're probably, the best thing would be to re-big that uh, in February, March.
We were talking about doing some fix to the front of it till the last meeting.
Okay, so if you wanna do the temporary stuff, um, that I have not worked on. That we could get a few prices from a couple of local contractors. I wouldn't wanna spend a ton of money if we're gonna do those floors. But at least it may get them to the, the winner. Like I said, that's what I. Yeah. Yep, I got a couple quotes in the office uh, that Mr. Snyder got way before we got involved with the.
Was it also the Reggie or you were there or?
No.
You were an hour ago, really?
Um, because when I first brought those two quotes in, Mike, it was Mr. Thacko that wanted to bid out. So um, that's how we ended up going a little bit longer route and bidding that out. But being that we only got one bid returned is, he agreed with me saying that there's no way to even get a basis, a real basis of what that project should cost when we only got one bid.
One bid.
Yeah, it's three beds or two beds that were within a couple thousand and each other would be different. But we got one bid that was almost three times more than what we thought it was gonna be. So.
So what were we talking about? Just fixing it to get through the winter?
Temporarily, yeah. Like I said, I talked to Mike last year. I told him I'd go up and float that out for him if he wanted to. If he got a couple of bags of highgo cement uh, down at Lowe's or wherever. Okay, Lowe's. But uh, he never got the floors steamed in and that's what I need him to do. I said that we'll never get the cement to stick throughout the winter unless you, you know, pressure wash that. It'd be better with a steam genner.
Probably a steam genner. I don't think a pressure washer is gonna pull that out.
Oil out of there and open up the pores. So.
So you wanna fill in what's there and just level it off?
Just so that when the doors are closed this way, that you ain't having to put blankets in front of them to let the heat out in the damn building. So if we could get that much done, um, you wanna check into that and get on Mike to see if they can.
They will.
Get that thing cleaned up. I don't mind going up there and helping to float that out. It won't take us more than probably two or three hours to float that, those cracks out. It will, it'll last forever. It'll be temporary. So even if we spent a couple hundred bucks, we waste more than that in fuel, I mean, the heat coming out.
But just along those lines, Kevin, and not to get into details with it. The facility up there, it needs something for oil and water disposal.
Yep.
So when it comes out for bid again, why not possibly take a look at that as well? Of putting, of installing something to deal with it.
Yeah, the thought was in there and everything would, would go to a pipe where you could put in a two thousand gallon cement tank.
Sure, sure.
And then you would have to pump it. Or you could actually hook it into a backfill, a backwash filtration system. They're very records intensive. So those guys would have to know up there that they have to backwash that system. It's a little bit more money to put in up there, right off the bat. But the, the. The good thing is that once you have it there, it's not ever a continuing expense. Because I'm gonna guarantee you by the time those trucks melt off four or five hundred pounds of snow, you're gonna fill a two thousand gallon tank up pretty quick. We did that at the fire station. Um, they have a oil and water separator tank inside in the floor. And then it goes to the external holding tank out in the parking lot. And um, we have one of the local haulers go in there and empty that tank when the alarm goes off and it's full. But you're never gonna go away from that expense which only goes up every year. And then once you put in the oil and water separator, you're mandated at least once a year to have it cleaned. I think we, and I'm not vying for them, but we use Crystal Clean out of Albany, uh, Glens Falls area, I really should say. And they come down, they do a good job, they clean it, they certify it, they give you the records you need for D E C and health department saying that it was done. So uh, there's a lot going into that, but it's a lot more money. We were trying to fix the immediate issues up there.
I understand.
And um, I didn't wanna throw good money after bad, so that's why I had them engineer that system so that we could put an oil and water separator in a holding tank or a um, backwash filtration system if needed. Not that it's, not maybe it is blocked, but it's as we get, as long as we're taking corrective action and tell somebody from D E C says, use your stamp, use your letter, get it done. We know what needs to get done. Uh, it's whether, when we wanna bite that off and how much we wanna bite off at once. So I was hoping that this floor project would be done this year and then next year we could start on. Because then we wouldn't get any other output money. And then I was hoping we could start with the oil and water separator. Uh, now that it's, I'm gonna be a year out, you wanna bite it all off at once, you're looking at probably five hundred thousand. Just so there's, that would take both years of the money at today's prices. So.
And if someday in the future you get a new building, that would have to do with you.
And that's the other thing, is that we have to look and make sure that, again, I don't wanna throw good money after that. So if we're gonna do any upgrades to that building and we put that oil and water separator where it's not gonna be conducive. Mike talked about drive in, drive out all, that's the way it goes today. They don't want any big trucks backing up because ninety-eight percent of all accidents happen when they're backing those trucks up. So they recommend drive in, drive out, bay doors for big trucks. So in order to do that, we probably have to turn that building. And then that's gonna throw off wherever we put the oil and water separator right now and all that expense. It's stuff that we gotta look at if we're gonna do anything different with that building. If we're gonna wait another twenty years before we do something with it? Well, yeah, then let's build it and get something done. But if we're gonna update that, that building up there and look at doing that when we do the salt shed, then maybe that's a discussion we should have before we put the floor drains in.
Sorry to complicate things like that, but it's just a thought, that's all. D E C rules are D E C rules.
Yeah, you know they're coming at us. Just when they're gonna tell me.
Yeah, and as long as, as long as the town's working.
Sure, I see your point.
As long as the town's working to take corrective action as they can feasibly, affordably do it. Don't see anybody coming in here with that letter. New York State's saying, I've got, you know, six months to fix this issue or whatever. But they're not gonna make it up. So again, that's been on my mind since I got in here. And uh, I know what we had to do down over there.
Yeah.
To get it accomplished. So I'm pretty familiar with it. But uh, it, it's, this board will have to make a decision on what route we're gonna go before. Cause if we start talking about that, then you might wanna start talking about an upgrade to the building. So that you've got it where you want it and what it's gonna be for the next two years. My opinion. I mean, I'm only one with the board.
You don't make any sense putting it in.
Yeah, there's no sense of doing it and then not being able to use it if you decide to change the building. It don't make any sense.
So if we're looking at that, then we gotta start looking at what kind of grants that we can get for a garage and a salt shed, see if we can't tie them in. They were allowing you to tie in the salt shed with a building at one time. Uh, those grants started out at a million dollars. We're missing bolt on that. That was seven, eight years ago. They went down to seven hundred fifty thousand and now last year that grant was half a million, five hundred thousand. It's gonna continue to go down as the grant, the, your first years of the grant are when they give out the most money. And then they start going back because they figure most people have taken care of their issues. Uh, that salt shed is gonna come back to haunt us if we don't do one shortly because we're still mixing our sand and salt in the pit down there. That's all a lot of runoff issues and uh, loss of services because you're buying the salt for the rain to melt it away. How much residents just don't wanna bite off is up to that. But eventually somebody will come with that piece of paper and then you are not going to have time to even.
No, you have no choice at that point.
Try to get money built up to afford to do it. So that's some of the stuff that we can look at, um, capital improvement projects for next year. Like I said, I wanna, I wanna actually do a, which should be coming up either this, I think the end of this month or the beginning of September when we do it, um, to go over the tax cap. So that we can fund those projects with the unallocated money that we've been kinda building up. It's an optics issue, but it's not a, uh, it's not, we're gonna tax them or issue. Because we have the money here, but we can't spend it unless it's in the budget. So I'm gonna have to make up our minds. Um, did I answer all your questions?
Yes.
Alright, um. So on that PFOA issue, um, Howard made a couple of meetings, basically our, I'll read what I got here. Uh, meetings with the county, Casella, yeah, over the sand road, PFOA, PFOS issue. Uh, basically they have PFOAs up there. Uh, the county in Casella has explained that they have no official consent order as yet. In my, my heart, in my gut, if they don't do something about it, I'm pretty sure that they will do it. Alright, so a consent order would mandate them to fix it, alright, or take care of the problem. They don't, they don't have an official one, but they know enough working with lawyers on both sides that that's where they're pushing. Uh, there were multiple uh, areas up there that could have been contaminators, but they're the two biggest pockets, so that's where they're gonna go after. And I say they, that'd be New York State D E C and New York State, not Cluck County, but New York State Health Department. They're willing to move forward to try and mitigate the PFOA issue on the sand road. There have been three meetings to date with multiple agency representatives, including Barton and La Judas. Uh, that's who the county hired and Casella for engineering. And the Burge Engineering for the town of Plac, we're in the town of Scotta Falls. Now, as you're well aware, we don't supply our own water. So anything that goes forward has to be agreed upon by the town of Plac, we're in the town of Scotta Falls. The town of Scotta, town of Scotta Falls, cause it's in our backyard. Uh, town of Plac, because they're the ones that's gonna supply the water or not. We have been negotiating with Clinton County and Casella for an agreement that will help to bring clean drinking water to the possible thirty-plus homes with the PFOA issue and further add water availability to up to seventy homes in that affected area or through that affected area. Because not all of those homes, those seventy homes have been proven to be contaminated at this time. They're worried that as this goes on and it keeps moving through the ground, that it eventually keep hitting more and more homes. Um, and it may, would make absolutely no sense to put a water line past everybody on the sand road and not allow them to hook into it if it were doing that, right? This negotiation is being completed, not overlooking all aspects of the prospective interested parties. We are looking to see that this project best suits the needs of both towns, like I just told you, and takes into consideration the best interest of the Marshall Water District, okay? Because no matter how they do this, um, they're gonna have to go through the Marshall Water District to hook into the sand road to get water. So um, those district users, we're trying to make sure that it's advantageous for them to utilize their lines to get water to the sand. Whether we, whether we at the end of this thing consolidate that one into Marseville or we leave them their own, uh, Marshall Water District two hasn't been decided yet. But either way, I've been pushing to make sure that all parties' interests are met in this. Since this new water line would be connected to the Marshall Water Main at State Route twenty-two B and the sand road, it is important to make sure that the supply line is going to be able to handle the extra flow and that the Marshall Water District residents' best interests are also taken into consideration. So that was a little fucking ass Howard. That was a little sticking point there for a little bit. So that went back and forth for a couple of weeks, but the last uh, meeting that we had, um, again, nothing. So I want a napkin right now, but um, they're looking more favorable of. What I asked them to do was to replace the water line right from the bridge, actually all the way up to Trudeau Lane. And uh, then we're gonna run the water line down Trudeau and up the sand. Because you're gonna, if you bring it up the sand road, literally my house is the only one on there. So you're gonna put in about two thousand to twenty-five hundred feet of pipe that doesn't help anybody but me, right? The only one in my house right there. So by going down Trudeau, it would have picked up all those residents on Trudeau and then it still would have went down the sand. They didn't really wanna hear that at all. They still wanted to go twenty-two B, sand road, even though nobody else can tie into it, go straight up the sand.
What about the school?
School has their own private line that's tied into our line in front of Mom's house on twenty-two B. And it goes all the way across. And that line was put in about nineteen fifty-six at the same time. So they're gonna start having issues there. But it is, I say it's a private line, but it's a semi-private because it's a school district, so it's property of the people that pay into the Saturday night school district. But uh, anyways, um, they're more agreeable to at least take care of for the bridge to San. And that's not guaranteed install yet either. I have a preliminary meeting coming up, I shouldn't say that, a preliminary draft coming up on a meeting on the twenty-fifth. So I'll know, I'll know much more once I go back to Zero's office on the twenty-fifth. After several meetings we have held with the county and Casella, they are in the process of putting a preliminary agreement together, like I just told you, it'll be on the twenty-fifth, I get that. Uh, the agreement will need to be approved by both towns and will be reviewed by um, Mr. William Ryan, okay? Cause he's did all our water districts and the extension, extension of them and the re-bordering of them. That's what he does. And I need somebody on our side that is looking out for the best interest of the residents in the town. Every, each meeting I've been to so far, Casella's lawyer missed the first one cause she said she got caught in traffic, so she zoomed in after a little late. Um, the county lawyer has been there every time. So. I'm not dumb, but when it gets to the point where you're looking at a draft, now it's time to start getting our lawyer to look at to make sure that all aspects are looking, looking right, okay? So I'm gonna get, I don't know what that'll be, but I'm gonna get Mr. Ryan to take a look at the preliminary draft after I get on the twenty-fifth and then I'll bring everything back to you guys and let you know where we're at. I will keep, like I said, I'll keep you in the loop as the process moves forward, as there are many moving parts to this adventure. The good news is that for the people on the sand road which need help with their PFOA contaminants in their wells, uh, they can now know that this long process and project is now fully underway. Cause you gotta remember, it took me two years to get us, two and a half years to get us where we are with the Marshall Water Project. So they're going after uh, funding um, from WEA, which was another sticking point on my end. Because we are reapplying for the WEA for the Marshall Water District. We're also trying to keep up with paperwork needed to keep the grants afloat right now. Okay. So I got a little pushback from Mike. He got a little cranky, like Zero right off the bat when, you know, he goes, I don't, we don't really feel like we're inhibiting your grant if we put in for one. And I said, you're right on the face value, cause the face value of the WEA is each project is looked at on its own basis. But you can't overlook the fact that we're a small upstate northern New York town that is now looking for, you know, six, seven million dollars worth of grant money out of WEA with the two projects. So theirs quote unquote, Mr. Davies, Ryan Davies, uh, said that they had the smoking gun because of the PFOA issue, which is no doubt life safety takes precedence over replacement of pipes. WEA now I understand has a separate avenue of funding for contaminants of PFOA and PFOS. So in that case, he's saying it really doesn't, won't affect, but again, on the back of your mind, town of Scotta Falls will be looking for maybe seven, eight million dollars with the WEA. And I think that is gonna show them. So by them putting up the good effort and good faith, saying that they may be willing to pay for the update of the main line from the bridge at least to the sand road where they're putting water up there, you're looking at maybe a little over a million dollars in worth of line that would be replaced as part of the other project. Or a connection fee or whatever that, that ends up. Now, the other thing that we, we hit them on, and that's where it's nice to have like Ron there and those guys. Uh, I had never really thought about it. I did think about the cost of setting up the district, which I told. about the cost of setting up the district, which I told them, I said, there's gonna be costs incurred, uh, water speeds for setting the district up, um, there's gonna be costs incurred for the maintenance and operation of the system, it's not free. Uh, we pay them about fifty-something thousand, fifty-three thousand a year just for the Marshall Water District. Um, the year's gonna be, uh, chlorine, a test, and annual quarterly, daily test for chlorine, annual, or, uh, quarterly test for all of the crap, and then annual test of everything. And then I said, there's gonna be upkeep and maintenance of the system. And plus, they're gonna have to pay for the lot, you know what I mean? This town of Plasberg ain't gonna give them water for free. So I said, I don't, Howard agreed right on that, that we don't think that, again, that should be borne by those residents through no fault of their own, end up with contaminated wells. So originally, when we put the first proposal on the table, it was, uh, that they paid for the maintenance and operation and up the rest of the, the cost of that system, um, for the duration. And they almost lost their models. So they came back tentatively, the last meeting we had, that they would be willing to pay those costs for two years. I don't wanna get into negotiating a bit too much here on camera, but, uh, you know, it's something at least. But, uh, I'm gonna try to push for more than, than that, so.
But they did state though, that the county would pick up all legal and
Yes.
um, engineering costs
Right.
associated.
So they, they wanted us, they wanted me to use Barton and Le Judas, and I refused. Not that I don't like Barton and Le Judas, they're working on a garage project for us, but it would be like you and I selling a house and using the same attorney for the proposal, okay? Their interest, if I use the bank's lawyer, is for the bank, not for me. In this case, Barton and Le Judas working for the county is trying to mitigate costs as much as they can. So I requested that we have our own engineer look at it, it was for Mayor, but not only. The town of Plasberg was gonna use them anyways, no matter what, on their end of things, because that's who they use. And he, um, their company has been working for the town of Scottup Falls for umpteen years and a lot in the last, uh, two years. Um, so they're willing to pay for the cost of that too. So like Howard just said, they're, they're willing to pay, pay right now, I don't have the agreement in front of me. And I probably, I can watch how much I say and we get the agreement, but, uh, basically they're looking at taking care of most of the costs on our end that it would take to set this thing up for the district, and actually, we would have all the work, mostly me, to get the district up and formatted and running our public hearings and everything else that have to go along with it. But it's, uh, it's probably, we're looking at funding to come if we get the, they get the WEA grant, uh, in twenty-three. Um, they're trying to finish up their preliminary engineering right now. Uh, the deadline of the WEA grant is the twenty-ninth. Um, so on that parallel, I am gonna have La Burge, uh, reapply for our WEA grant on the Marseville Water District. They said they do that for four thousand, so flat rate fee. Um, and I think it would be crazy if we both didn't apply for it anyways and see what happens. But, uh, again, it's, it's gonna be a long, arduous project because there's so many hands in this. There's the county, two towns, and Casella. So there's a lot of negotiation that's gonna be going on. Uh, but it's moving quick. It's moving a lot quicker than I really wanted it to, I'm trying to stay up on, because of the deadline of that WEA grant. They don't, they don't, they don't want us to pay for anymore, just like our residents don't wanna pay anymore for our water, then we absolutely have to. So if they get sixty percent of it funded on a probably, say, a six-million-dollar project, you're looking at, you know, about four million coming from there that they don't have to spend. Anyway, all that to know how everything goes back, I'll give each member of the board a copy of that, uh, draft and look at it, please. See if you see anything I've missed or Howard has missed, um, or something that you don't like or doesn't look good to you or you need explained. And then, uh, I won't be signing anything, I guarantee you on the twenty-fifth, but I will get the draft, the draft, and then go from there and bring it back so that we can all look at it from the bottom.
Will we need to get a special meeting? Do you have time?
Um.
Workshops or meeting?
No, I, I think what we could do is probably bring it up at a work session if, um, if it needs to be a, a separate, um, executive session because it's negotiations with the county and Casella, other than what I kinda laid out the basics already from now without getting into it too deep, um, then we could call a special meeting and do that. I would be willing to do that, as long as you guys would be willing to show up, so we can do that. Like I said, I don't wanna speak for any of the entities that are going in, that's what I've perceived so far in the negotiations. And so far, it's been a, it's been a give and take. But at least they're starting to give a little bit, um, some of the requests that we've made. So, but there's a lot more with, with the town of Plasberg side of things, so. Let's see how it goes. Um, petition. I finally got the final, uh, answer from Ryan Davies, or Ryan Davies, Bill Ryan, and, um, he said that the two oh two B law, again, allows for that ten days from the time that the bond was, um, voted on. He was checking to make sure, over all this time, this, this one file here is all over that petition. So this is all the paperwork that I've had to provide for him, and, um, he said you're, you're going to move forward the project, the towns, the town boards. Uh, again, like I said, on the record in there, I'd like to have an overall rough estimate of what this is gonna cost. Uh, on the backside of it, like I've been saying right along, we won't have to worry about this project if we wait till next spring to start calling, because we will not have time to get everything, all the paperwork done and bids in to even see where it's going. So like I just told you, I'm gonna, um, go after the WEA grant still. Um, one of the pieces of paper that CDBG is screaming for right now and has been screaming for for about three weeks, um, is they want the archaeological study done. Um, when I talked to Nancy at La Burge, they were saying it was the E R R, and I said the E R R a couple of times on record, I apologize. The E R R automatically gets updated as the information comes in. The next process is they need that archaeological study done. They, they said that could cost up to about five grand to get that done. Uh, once we fill out the paperwork, it goes to the National Historic at Albany, and they start digging through to make sure there's no, uh, historical significance to where that pipeline is going through. If they don't find anything, then he goes, it probably won't cost you hardly anything. But he goes, if they do, it could cost you a estimate of about five grand. But if we don't move forward with this, we're gonna lose the CDBG for one point two five million.
So realistically, if I could ask a question?
Yep.
Regarding the resolution that I put in?
Yep.
Is it basically, your findings are, is that the people in that district really are not gonna be voting on that? That we've went past, I'm trying to comprehend what you're saying? That we've been past the deadline for the people to vote, so the vote's off. This board is gonna decide.
And they're gonna have to do that with the knowledge of what the public wants. And that's where we were back then. Like I told you right from that first work session in here, when we got into a pretty heated discussion, I said, I don't know if I can legally hold them. And that two oh two B law does not allow you to go back in time, okay? And if you do go back in time, because basically we applied for the grants after we approved the bond. So as soon as you go back to a vote, you're gonna automatically lose all the monies you have. You're gonna lose the roughly, not roughly, you're gonna lose a five and a half million dollars at one point seven five percent, you'll lose the one point two five from CDBG, and you'll lose the one point three from USDA R D.
So how much do we have in grants right now? Three million?
You have, well, it's, uh, one point two five plus one point, three, two, five, what's, uh, two million, two and a quarter, a little over two and a quarter million. No, no, two and a half, a little over two and a half million. So with the, that's why I've been pushing so hard to get to the WEA grant, which is now, it used to be sixty percent funded up to five million, it's now sixty percent funded up to eleven million. So there's, they refunded that, the WEA grant with a lot more money. So there's a lot more money to go around. Um, actually, we were two projects out of the twenty that were submitted by, um, La Burge to WEA that got letters from CDBG, or excuse me, from, um, WEA to reapply this year. We're one of two projects, um, out of twenty. So eighteen, they didn't send that letter to, but ours, ours and one other.
So we could stay in the game, the other, how much?
At least three million, maybe more.
How long will it take before we know that?
That, we won't have a check until twenty twenty-three, but we would know probably by January whether or not we're gonna get the money.
When's our drop dead date when we get?
Our drop dead date is January the twenty-fourth, but our, our real drop dead date is like now. Because if we don't start moving on the paperwork that's needed to move forward with the project, which is the archaeological study, and I would like to go forward with, uh, the four thousand for applying for the WEA grant, um, you're, you're not gonna have time. You will never be able to bid this project out by next spring. And that's really where the roads, you know, the tire mind's gonna hit the road, is when we find out where the bids are.
We're gonna have to apply for the five million dollar loan before we know we can get one million grant.
No, we got the loan, uh, we got the, we got what they call a low-interest USDA loan, never before seen, at one point seven five. And anybody that's been keeping an eye on the interest rates know that the interest rates are probably gonna be seven, eight percent, maybe even nine percent in a month or so. So I don't know what the low-interest rate loans for the government guarantees are, but right now, we're locked in at one point seven five.
So if we get the, I mean, you're gonna have to go for that pretty similar, right? Oh, we have that already.
We have it.
We have it.
But the problem that I'm under is, go ahead.
If you get, uh, just other grant that you're talking about, can you do away with that loan?
We can reduce it, yeah. If we get three million from WEA, but you gotta remember too, if we get three million from WEA, we lose
One point three for the, the USDA R D.
But that's gonna drop that down.
But you can, they can only take it away once. And that's only because USDA R D only puts money on top of the project to bring the end user down to one point eight percent of their earned income, gross income. We will probably never be able to get USDA R D money or CDBG money, again, if, because that was the income study, you remember when Liz Teford did the income study?
Yeah.
And we were still blowing off of the old census data. Now that we did the new twenty twenty census, the incomes of everybody has gone up because of what's going on.
Right.
And it, it, we had to, we had to, we had to stay under fifty-six thousand a year for the mean income for the water district. And we came in at fifty-four thousand some odd dollars. Or we'd never even be able to apply for CDBG or USDA R D, because they're low to moderate income grants. That's why they give money away on top of projects for areas that have low to moderate income families.
Is there any stuff, other grants available?
Yeah, I'm still waiting on, and I asked, um, both to check into what's going on with the Jillian Branton Schumer, two point five six million that they put in for congressional funding. And I'm still waiting on Liz Stefanic, um, who also approved us on, on her end for congressional funding. So that bill is gonna hit the House as a co-sponsored bill.
In a couple of months.
And I, I, I'm looking to see whether it made it through the Ways and Means Committee, because before it hits the Senate for a vote, it's gotta go through the Ways and Means, and that's where I wanna know, because that was our next step. I mean, we already got picked out of hundreds of, hundreds of projects throughout the state by both, all three of those, you know, you know, elected officials, and, um, I don't, I don't know until it goes through the Ways and Means, and then when it hits the Senate, if it's a co-sponsored bill by both parties, we don't get much higher than Schumer right now on the Democratic side of things, and, uh, Elise's got quite a bit of juice on the Republican side, so, um, if it, if it hits that Senate floor as a bipartisan bill, we got a good chance of getting it. But I can't, I can't guarantee you anything. Uh, the biggest hurdle I gotta know right now is whether we made it through the Ways and Means. If it made it through Ways and Means in Washington DC, then it's gonna hit the Senate floor and then we'll know. I'm not a, I mean, that, that money wouldn't come in until twenty-three either, but the federal government, even though they get to print their own money, uh, they still have to have it in the federal budget for twenty twenty-three. So we would be a line item in there. So it's coming to the end, of course. They're no different than us, we gotta have our budget in September.
So just because I brought the resolution up in good faith, and I have people who would sign that petition.
Yep.
And those people are gonna be asking me to try to explain it to them. So in reality, this resolution that I brought up is gonna be acted on next Tuesday night and voted on by this board, right? Correct?
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday's the meeting.
If you
Twenty-third.
The petition, the petition has no validity. If you wanna put in a resolution, I want you, and we moved forward on that resolution because we tabled it, so I never
Right, Kevin, I understand, I understand.
And there was a specific reason why I asked that we do that, like I said. We will lose all the funding that we have.
I've heard that many times. I respect it, okay?
So that's all I want everybody to know.
But people who live in that district think in general that they're entitled to a vote on this project. I don't have any more to say right here.
Well, that resolution, we can't do, because that timeframe on two oh two B is passed when you could vote on it. Because you can bring any resolution to a vote. You can do that. You have ten days from the time that it's passed. And I shouldn't say any resolution, it's monetary resolution. So if you're, you're saying we're gonna put a bond in for five million dollars, that bond must be eight point one, because we had to write it that way because they didn't know what kind of funding we were gonna get.
I tell you what really kinda bothers me is this. Here, we're using this Albany attorney who represents La Burge Engineering, and I think it's a conflict. The people in that water district are paying for an attorney that really is working against them in a sense.
I don't follow your thinking.
Can you comprehend what I'm saying? Am I wrong?
Yeah.
About that?
Yeah.
Why? Explain to me.
Because he doesn't work
Mr. Ryan is not a conflict in this case?
No. He doesn't, he's not on a payroll for La Burge, he doesn't work for La Burge, he's his own private
Well, he works for us.
Exactly.
The people in that water district have paid him to do this.
Right.
Not the people in general in the town, people in the district.
Because that's what he does. He does nothing but water district.
Okay, just my opinion, we should have had
According to the website, they are business partners.
According to the website, they are business partners, LeBurge in this, William Ryan, they're business partners. And for him to represent LeBurge who's out to make engineering money, uh, his, whatever else is involved in setting this deal up, is he giving you the, is there any other chance to get another opinion from another law firm that's not connected to LeBurge? Of, of course, this guy is gonna look for information that is gonna be beneficial to LeBurge to keep this away from the vote. Right now, Kevin, you got to know the majority of these people in this town are dead set against this.
See, well, I'll, I'll disagree with you there.
But yet you pursue it so hard.
First of all, it's a work session, not a public meeting. But secondly, okay, um, you got about eleven houses with twenty centers, okay? So you're gonna have eleven households say that that whole project is dead before they even know what's gonna cost them. Cuz I can't even tell you what it's gonna cost you, okay? The only thing I can tell you is that if we don't go forward with the process, then the project will be dead anyways and nobody will have to worry about whether we're gonna put water in or not, okay? Because if we don't go forward with the process, we will never, we're a year into this, okay? January is when we got, almost a year. January is when we got the bond and the two grants. And we have two years, twenty-four months before the project has to be completed. And right up until, Lucas was pretty good at USDA RD, he said, uh, we're not gonna pull money out from underneath your funding if you go over that twenty-four months. CDBG usually holds you to that date. And over the phone, speaking with him after he thought we didn't apply or put a couple pieces of paperwork that was needed, um, that was, uh, I was out in the tractor that day helping putting the clay on a ball field, but, um, he called me back and he said, well, he goes, with the supply chain disruption and COVID and everything else going on, he goes, again, if you start the project and it's feasible to get done in a timely manner, then we're not gonna pull your funding. Again, the only way that we move forward with this is if we continue with the paperwork. That doesn't necessarily mean that the project will go forward. And that's why I wanted the informational meeting to start with. Because before I start writing five thousand dollar checks or four thousand dollar checks of them Marshall Water District users, I wanted them to understand why it was necessary and what it was gonna cost for the funding we have right now. And I don't have a crystal ball to know what it's gonna end up on. But they had to be told that if we didn't go forward with it, that we would lose any hope of going forward with the project because of time. I don't make the rules, I just have to follow.
Well, why wouldn't you do it in stages and spend the two and a half million dollars you have now, like on phase one, and wait for the rest of the grant to come in? Right now, the people wanna have a say. No offense, but other than you.